Carter.
Oh, sorry, Kyle, are we ready? Do I need to redo? Yeah, look at that. Hi, guys, welcome to the June meeting. We have Sandra, Shannon, Chris, Kat. Here, is there anyone online? Brian, Sean.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum, so. Any of the pledge allegiance. Flags back there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the rule of law and for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda reviewed. Any questions? Have a look through, I'm sure you read your papers.
Yes.
I have to make a motion to approve. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. Review.
Review.
I think I said. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda review. To approve the agenda. Any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Reports.
All right, I'd like to introduce Chantrel Lee. I, who is one of our high school students, and I had an opportunity to hear Chantrel share her. She's a regatta princess, they share. Representing our, our school district, and I had a chance to hear her speech at Rotary last month and was so impressed that I invited her to come and share it with all of you. So, welcome, Chantrel.
Welcome. Thank you so much, truly, for inviting me. About three months ago, we got these fixed, the speech topics drawn out of hat. So, I've, I've got to know this woman within the last like three months, and it's been truly inspiring. Very much. I don't know if I should do like a little circle speech.
Whatever makes you happy.
Hello, my name is Chantrel Lee, and I have the honor of representing Seaside in the 2025 Astoria Regatta Core. Here's a variation of a story that many of you might be familiar with. There's once a man and his son that got into a terrible accident, in which the father did not survive. The son was then rushed to the hospital, and here a sheriff arrived to investigate. The sheriff then says, I cannot handle this case, that boy is my son. So, the question is, who is the sheriff to the boy? If you hesitated before realizing that the sheriff is the boy's mother, you are not alone. This riddle reveals our unconscious bias and our tendency to assume positions of power like sheriff belong to men. This bias isn't just in our minds, it's in our history books of women making up only point five percent of all reported history, despite shaping societies, leading movements, and breaking barriers in every field like law enforcement. For much of our history, policing has been seen as a man's job. However, in the state of Oregon, one woman refused to accept that. Today, I want to introduce you to someone who has truly inspired me. Diana Simpson is Oregon's first female sheriff, a trailblazer who shattered stereotypes and persevered throughout her entire career. Diana grew up in a forestry town in Idaho, similar to the rugged beauty of Clatsop County. She was one of the six girls in her graduating class of twenty-five. Life was quiet, close-knit, and full of unspoken expectations. All throughout high school, Diana was drawn to this idea of becoming a detective. She found herself completely absorbed by the nineteen-seventies TV show Policewoman and idolized the female officer Sergeant Pepper Anderson. Not once while watching did she think she'd be denied a job because of her gender. After graduation, Diana left her small town and moved to the busy city of Boise. Here, she earned her degree in criminal justice, and what started in that quiet town of Idaho was only the beginning. Diana was ready to prove that no dream, no title, and no badge were out of reach. With her criminal justice degree in hand, Diana landed a position as a pre-sentence investigator, a role in which she thrived. But after a few years of this, she felt the pull for something different. She wanted to be closer to the front lines of the justice system where changes happened in real time. This brought her to McMinnville in nineteen eighty-one, where she applied for a position as a jail release officer. It was a perfect fit. She had the drive, the experience, the passion. However, after she submitted her application, weeks went by with no word. Confused and persistent, she called to follow up again, and again, and again. Finally, the truth surfaced in a way that sung more than the silence ever could. The sheriff wasn't interested in hiring a woman. It wasn't just a rejection, it was a wake-up call. It was a reminder that the path she had chosen would not be easy, but Diana had never been one to back down from a challenge. Determined to press on, Diana became a parole officer and quickly proved herself, getting transferred to Carvalis and graduating top of her class at the parole information academy. She then rose through the ranks of sergeant, then under sheriff, until she was asked to consider running for sheriff. And after twenty-five years of service, she nearly retired, but something in her refused to quit. So, instead, she trained even harder. She re-entered the police academy and then announced her candidacy as Benton County Sheriff. She was then met with direct discrimination. She was told no one would ever vote for women. She even had doors slammed in her face, and still, she stayed above this, telling voters, don't vote for me because I'm a woman, vote for me because I'm the best person for the job. And in two thousand and six, they did. She was elected sheriff, and at her swearing-in, she addressed her all-male team and said, look, I know some of you might not be happy with this result, but this is it, so either get on the train or get off, but do not hold us back. Despite the adversity she faced, Diana completely transformed the department by implementing certification processes, boosting morale, earning trust from the union, and gaining support across every branch of law enforcement. Her leadership didn't just open doors, it changed the standard. So, when I was given the privilege to speak with Ms. Diana, she told me that being the first meant carrying the weight for those to follow. And now, I understand what that truly means. Like Diana, I may feel uncertain about going into a male-dominated field. I may feel afraid about how I'm going to pay for an education, but I refuse to let that fear decide the size of my dreams. Because the truth is, barriers aren't broken by themselves. They're broken by those who dare to try even when they're told to stop, and by those who push forward and lift others up as I climb. I remember being a little girl at the regatta parades, waving up at the princesses, imagining that one day I'd be in their shoes. So, now, as I stand before you, I do so not just with pride, I do it with purpose. I carry with me the strength of women like Diana Simpson, and I walk forward for that young girl that might be listening. I hope that she will see herself, not just in these stories, but in the history we are all still writing. So, let us all be the reason that someone else believes they can. Thank you.
Questions for Sean?
You got any questions?
It was two thousand and six that was the first.
Very first in Oregon.
Did you get to talk to her?
I did, I had a phone call with her, it was about forty-five minutes long, and she's just super passionate and excited about all the things. She's very, very fully. So, she's retired, but she's on a scholarship board in Carvalis. So, it, I think, I don't exactly remember what the acronym was, but she's still like giving out scholarships, and I think she's helping like young women wanting to go into like the police forces and stuff, so she's still active in our community.
So, you got to choose her as a topic, or she was given to you?
It was drawn out of her. Yeah. But I, he's really incredible, I would have chosen her, given the chance.
Yeah.
Truly. Because it's, it's such like a shocker when you hear like two thousand and six, it's like you're like pinback your turds, like you're joking, that was the first. And so, we're all still part of it, it's very interesting.
You're a great speaker.
Thank you. You're gonna be a senior?
Yes, next year.
In Astoria, or?
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, nice job, thank you.
So, Chantrel was also one of the leaders starting our natural resources club.
Oh, really? So, that was, um, two years ago, my stream ecology class, Mr. Johnson asked if any of us could go to this dinner, and then I like opened my hand, and then me and my sister went to it, and that's where I met Mr. Johnson, and we kind of started it up, what the Ridgeline Club is, and it's, it's truly grown to more what we've expected it to be, so it's very exciting.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming, especially on a nice sunny night.
Yeah.
Keep that practice up.
Do any of you have any questions for her? Comments? No?
Yeah, I will tell you that she is an amazing woman, that is resilient and shining light here, and you go on and on about things she's accomplished here in just three years and, yeah, probably years here in school. She's also one of the leaders in FBLA and has performed incredibly well at that organization as well, and we have a garden outside of, you know, thanking her and they're putting in a drip water system, this, I mean. So, I mean, I think it's fairly obvious.
Just going places.
Yeah.
You're having the opportunities, Jeff, to tell her no, and she's found a way to make you say yes?
You know, I don't typically, I mean. Sometimes come across my dad's kind of go. I hope this thought out, and I have never. We work together to avoid barriers to getting things done.
Now, Mr. Boyd's more the person that I have to like. Thank you so much.
Well, we're looking forward to everything you accomplish in your senior year.
Yes.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right. So, the second recognition is recognition of our outgoing school board members. So, I wrote some things down because you guys really mean a lot to me. So, I invited Brian, Ellen, Brian, can you come up and sit in the front row?
And you have to give a speech at that event.
All right, so I'd just like to take time to thank our board members who are leaving their positions. Their dedication and commitment to students has been transformational in our district, and I'm so appreciative of all your work on the board. So, I invited Brian to join us, because we haven't really had an opportunity to recognize Brian. So, Brian began as a board member in two thousand and twenty and served on the board until two thousand and twenty-four. Brian served on the Strategic and Operational Planning and Budget Development Advisory Committee for the superintendent, and we worked on several projects together. Some highlights from Brian's work on this committee included updating the facility rental process and agreement, and navigating that little project called the softball improvement. I've always appreciated Brian's advocacy for the school district at community meetings, including Rotary and Seaside Chamber. Your calm, level thinking was always appreciated during our board meetings, so thank you, Brian, for your service.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
So, next, I'd like to recognize Chris Quarter. Chris was appointed to the school board in two thousand and twenty-one, and sadly, this is his last board meeting. Chris's work on the Strategic and Operational Planning and Budget Development Advisory Committee has been instrumental on so many projects, including, as I said, the update of the facility rental and navigating the, the softball improvement project, planning summer capital improvement projects, and participating in the initial design of our future performing arts center. I have regularly relied on Chris's knowledge as a contractor to guide our work. Chris understands our community and is an incredible supporter of our programs, our students and our staff, whether it's flipping burgers, at the end-of-the-year luncheon, or coaching softball, Chris is always willing to help. Thank you, Chris, we're really gonna miss you.
Oh, thank you.
Last but definitely not least, Michelle. Michelle Hockin joined the school board in two thousand and seventeen, and this is also her last meeting. Michelle has been so supportive from the get-go, always ready to give a hug and share encouraging words. Michelle's connections with the community take place on a daily basis over some really good coffee. Michelle has served on the Community Stakeholder Relations Advisory Committee for the superintendent and has been instrumental in researching and developing the design of our future performing arts center. Additionally, Michelle has been an integral part of forming our education foundation, which will begin in the fall. Michelle has an incredible gift for connecting and bringing people together, and I'll always be grateful for all the people she introduced me to right when I moved here. So, thank you, Michelle, for all you've done and for being such a great friend. I'll be in soon for a cinnamon dolce. Thank you. I just want to open it up to anybody else who'd like to honor our board members that are leaving.
Well, I'm certainly gonna miss you a lot.
Yeah, do I have to start bringing snacks?
I'm very sad.
It's been good, lots of good times, so progress. You guys are, you guys are in good hands.
Yes, definitely.
If not, we'll be bad.
I will note that after the meeting, we have some cake to enjoy with everyone. We can stay.
And we also have chili bases for you.
And it's, I guess it's been very welcoming, so it just made me very comfortable. This was very nerve-wracking at the beginning. That's the goal. I think that's student business. So, I have to say, let's skip three pages, this.
Business, but we don't have our representative.
Yeah, I skipped the whole page, though.
Ellie Crater will be joining us next.
Oh, very nice.
Okay.
She the new student representative?
She is, she is, yeah. And she's already met with Leslie and I, and so she's, I get past. Yes, so that's gonna, we're really excited to have her.
What's her name's?
Ellie Crater.
Charlotte.
Ella, Ella, sorry about that, thank you. Yeah.
Is she a sophomore, junior?
She's a sophomore. So, she can, she'll be with us for three years.
She was her last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's high school, all right, yes. So, now we're onto the superintendent portal.
That's worth. Good.
Yeah. Okay, a few things to share with you today. I want to thank all of our staff for another successful year. The retirement lunch was a huge success, so heard from a lot of people that the barbecue lunch is what they want to keep going. So, once again, thanks to Chris and Brian Taylor for man in the grill there, and food was really good. So, a special thank you to Jessica Smith and her staff for food service, Chuck and everybody in facilities for setting us up, and for Leslie in the district office for all those details along the way. Our summer capital improvement projects have already started this week. You can see right over here that they've already started making this into a classroom. And that, just a reminder that the summer projects include enclosing this space into a classroom and, and some, the flex space on the third floor, as well as the flex spaces in the middle school, so those are gonna give, give us enclosed classrooms that we really need. We are adding more parking to P R E at the, at the retirement luncheon, that got some cheers. And we are also able to fit in improvement redoing the baseball crow's nest, building a new nest, all that. So, that crow's nest, so that's, those are exciting projects, we continue to.
Oh, sorry.
Thinking, I finally figured out which one that was. So, we really appreciate Brokeup and Jender and Brian Hardbeck, they, they're fast. So. As I have shared with you, we received a grant from the Department of Human Services and Oregon Emergency Management for three Conex boxes, three forty-foot Conex boxes that are, will be filled once they're located to their, to their permanent position, filled with everything we need to be prepared for an emergency. This was about a quarter of a million-dollar grant that we received, and there's a company called Fixed Resilience that comes and packs all those up for us and teaches us how to use all of that. So, we're, we're very, very thankful for that. Last Thursday, June twelfth, over fifty people were here from the Department of Human Services and Emergency Management and the city of Seaside, Clatsop County, to take a look at that and congratulate us on the grant, so we're really excited about that. These materials will be shared with the city of Seaside. We will be responsible if some, if some kind of emergency happens during the school day or school events, and then they will have access to it in any of the other times. So, we are in the process of developing an agreement with them on how to use that, but we're really excited for that. We are one of, of only two areas in, along the Oregon coast who received that grant. And, you know, a big, a big thank you to Mr. Hudson, who used to be the, Rick Hudson, who used to be the city manager, the city emergency manager in Keene Beach. So, he really advocated for us to get it. So, that's exciting. The next item we do, we do have, we did tell them we have another item on our wish list for, from the state. We're hoping to get funding for a water filtration trailer, because we have the two live streams, and if there was a prolonged emergency, then we could filter our own, all that water to become drinking water, so.
Is there, is that some of the, there's grant funding?
There is some grant funding, and Jeff Lord of the city said he's gonna forward me some grants, so that is awesome.
Was that part of the, is that part of the preparation we were looking at? Did we have like a, we had that presentation of, that was a piece of the red?
Yes.
One of those units, it's like a very big trailer.
Yeah, it looks like a, just a trailer you could pull behind a.
Yeah.
SUV or pickup, yeah.
Gotcha.
And lastly, in the area of emergency management, yesterday, on Monday, our non-instructional staff received a two-hour training from Sandy Brown, who has been serving on updating all of our emergency management programs and processes. We had a two-hour training on reunification, so that is if there's some kind of event up here and we need to reunify kids with their families, so that was a two-hour training and was super helpful. So, that's what's been going on.
All right, good stuff, busy, busy. Thank you.
Yeah, same, saw those comics box up there.
Yeah. And Tony, this is the fiscal services report.
Hello, I have just a few things. So, we are waiting for approximately three-point-five million in grant funding between state and federal, so it's been kind of slow coming in. We're in our interim audit week, it's going really smoothly. They're concentrating on ASB books right now. You might heard Senate Bill eight-four-nine passed, and that cut the purse increases by one-point-six-eight percent for both tier one and tier two and OPSERP, so our net increase next year is going to be three-point-six-one for tier one and tier two, and three-point-two-seven percent respectively. Those are increases, so much better than five-point-two-nine and four-point-nine-five.
Yeah. Did we have a number of what that was, what that looked like?
I remember in the budget, I just don't remember what. It's a big show.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was. So, and then I'm also food service director, another hat I, I have. So, food, summer food service is again going to be at Sunset Empire Parks and Rec, the old Broadway building, starting June twenty-third and finishes up August twenty-second. The hours are from eleven-thirty a.m. to twelve-fifteen p.m. Anybody under eighteen eats for free, and adult lunch is only five dollars.
Nice. Do we fund that, or is that?
That is partially state-funded.
We do it down there, because the kids are more central.
Yeah, it's centrally located, yeah. And on the bus line, if people need it, yeah.
That's good, same.
Yeah. Thank you.
You've been doing that for a while?
Yeah, we've been doing it for.
How long have you been doing it?
Let's see. Five years now, so far.
And that starts when?
It starts on June twenty-third.
So, that's, I think there's several camp starts around that time. Does that include the, the camp, the campers?
Anybody can come, anybody, anybody. Anyone under eighteen.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, any questions? Is that a hand?
No.
Oh. Who wants to go first? I'll hate that.
We have spent about eighteen months researching and looking into updating the way that we do staff evaluations for, you know, observations, and then how staff evaluations are recorded and stored. What we really wanted to do was have our evaluation system be more aligned with the work that we're doing with the Marzano Framework of Instruction. And so, I just wanted to say thank you to all the admin who kind of struggled through this, you're piloting different projects, we've settled on one that I think that we all feel really good about. The language is very, it mirrors the framework of instruction that we're working with. And so, moving forward, we'll be able to have more tailored, more appropriate evaluation systems for all of our different certified staff. So, that's been a really big project.
Awesome, thank you, and thank you guys for struggling through the pilot program. That's a good, I mean.
It's not fun.
It's not fun, but finding the right one hopefully makes a huge difference.
And we also had a number of teachers who were involved in that process too, so, and they're, they're really excited about it.
Good.
So, thank you, everybody, graduation was awesome, what a great night. It might have been the first year that we've had all seven board members in attendance, which was really, really super cool, having everybody there, and so, here, as expeditious as possible, but I also want to always honor our people, our, our young people, and give it an opportunity to, you know, be seen, I mean, what a great turnout, that was, it was packed, so really, really, really great. What a, what a fun evening, and had the opportunity to spend all night with them at the graduation party, I learned my lesson last year, I rode the bumper cars too many times, I had issues like getting out of bed and walking. Despite being hounded, I was very particular about like maybe at once every fifteen minutes or so. Purple Gaggen was not so fortunate, and was the primary target for a lot of folks, but we had a, we had a great night, so it was a ton of fun. Despite school being over, there are tons of summer activities happening all over the place. Summer athletics and highlighting, just talk, an opportunity, I've sat down with Mike Verholt, as he was buying Disneyland tickets today. There are ten young people from Seaside that are representing Seaside at the FBLA National Convention in Anaheim this summer, so. You know, when they have it on the west coast, it's always great, it's certainly more affordable for our families and our students to go, so really, really cool. Just upcoming things, just want to highlight Friday, Congresswoman Bonamici is doing a open house here that I believe starts around one-thirty, that'll be in the, the high school gymnasium, so been working with her team, district office to welcome them. Fortunately, Ron Wyden was supposed to be here, but was called away to Eastern Oregon, so. But we will have at least Congresswoman Bonamici here, and then lastly, I also want to echo some of the things that Susan said, and thank Brian and Chris and, and Michelle, you know, there have been, haven't been easy, right? With, with a lot of things that have happened, and there have never been a daytime week that I ever felt that I didn't have, and then my team didn't have, most importantly, my team didn't have the complete support of, of our board, and you look around and watch national news and local news, there are several people that don't have the ability to sit here and say the same thing, and so when we talk about what's best for kids, I, I think a lot of people say that, but I don't think they live that, and so I appreciate the things, because I do believe that you live that, and remove barriers for our kids, there's always a way, and so I just want to say thank you for the time that you serve, and appreciate you tremendously, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank you for, I know the end of the year is very chaotic, and you and Jason, you also, Susan, but you guys especially are trying to get those kids to the finish line and doing everything you can, and you, when you walk out there on the day of graduation, people don't look at you and say, he must have stressed out, getting to this point. It's a celebration, and everyone up there is happy, so hats off to you, I know, you know, we see the sweat dripping. It's a beautiful thing, and, and, you know, I'm grateful to get to be a part of it, and it is, it's fun sitting up there and watching their smiles, but, you know. It's a lot of work to get them there, so thank you.
It's definitely rewarding sitting there, being a part of it, all the work that you guys put in, so. It's a special thing that I, I didn't anticipate being so much a part of, but I'll definitely miss that for sure. Sometimes you have to kind of reflect on some things and how things are going and whatnot, but, you know, anytime anybody has. Sometimes you have to kind of reflect on some things and how things are going and whatnot. But you know, anytime anybody has any type of little animosity within our district, I always say just, you know, pay attention a little bit more and work on the grass that we got because we got a good team. And I think everybody's heading in the right direction or has the same intention and focus. So I'll be missing some of that. Just tell you guys will be doing great.
What, do you have anything?
Uh, I would just say thanks again to the board. Um, thirty few years in this district, uh, our board has consistently worked collaborative living with legislators uh with, I think I said, kids first. And uh, you three definitely did that as well. So thank you so much for kind of carrying that torch and then championing it through a whole bunch of curveballs that over the last five years. Uh, so I I know it was difficult uh at times, but uh you guys were uh a group that could always be counted on and and, you know, sleep easy at night knowing that the our board is consistently doing the right thing. So I really appreciate that. Appreciate what the board does for all of our kids.
Thanks, Jason.
Julie and her team are at a conference uh the next couple of days. So um, but they, she wanted me to express how much she's appreciated all of you.
Thanks.
Well, good.
Awesome.
Um. Is there anyone from the union on there today?
Uh, not teachers, but we do have OSEA.
Will that be known? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go for it. Who do we have?
Hi, I um don't have a whole lot, but um just wanted to share um that um staff, uh, most staff are are off at summer vacation and they are um. I don't want to say relieved, but glad that uh it's it's it it's time. They are ready. Um, the the barbecue um was um a good topic of conversation. I hope maybe next year we can push it back a little bit so the bus drivers can join us. Um, I felt bad um that they couldn't enjoy uh the barbecue with us, but it was a beautiful day outside, which was great. And um, we just want to thank the board um. And you know, get ready for next school year and um we're kind of in a um unknown right now um with negotiations and where we're at and um staff are um a little nervous about that, but they're ready to come back in a few months after resting and and um being here for the students and and uh the families and just kind of doing, doing the work that they do so well. So um, we have um in terms of OSEA, we have our state conference coming up next week. Uh, we um are sending four uh classified members to that for the first time, I believe, ever. Um, which um is kind of a huge feat for us. So that's exciting. And um, I think that's kind of really all we've got going on in our neck of the woods. So um, thank you for a good year and I hope everybody enjoys their summer.
Yeah, you too. Thank you, Megan.
Support here, Drew.
Yes, I'm just for the board's information, Chris Peters, the transportation supervisor and I offered um uh for each of the bus drivers to have subs that day so they could join us. Um, they all did choose um to continue to drive because they wanted to say goodbye to their, their students. But uh, yeah, we did, uh, we did think about that. So.
It was hard to get every.
Yeah, yeah.
You.
Yeah. But but I was glad, I mean, Chris has worked really hard to to develop a robust sub list. So um, you know, in the future, if they do choose to take advantage of that, we'll be able to do it.
Awesome.
I have to say there was some good bus driving going on this year.
Mm hmm.
Did you have a question? Any, yeah, excuse me. Uh, do you guys, are you guys still in negotiations?
We are.
Uh, and it continues even past the.
It'll continue in the fall.
Into the fall. Oh, okay. So it pauses in the.
Yes.
Got it. Yeah.
Uh, okay, um, public comment. Do we have anyone, any public today? Hi.
Don't worry about it. Don't be shy to do it.
Do I need to still read this?
Yes, I do. Okay. The meeting will now be open to receive public comment. We value the time and initiative members of the public take to share their thoughts with the board. The board's role during public comment is not to immediately respond, but to listen. If follow-up is necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do so. Remember, we are all role models for our students. Please share your thoughts respectfully. Should any public comment include complaints regarding a personally identifiable staff member? The board chair will direct the speaker to the proper administrative process found in board policy KL. Public complaint speakers will have three minutes to express our thoughts. Any public comment?
You guys are doing great.
Um. Anything online? Not in personal. Okay, so on to the consent agenda, which is an action item.
Um, I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second. Uh, motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments?
Just won't say I'm excited already, just looking at all these um uh coaching.
Yes.
Wow, nice job. Not at a position.
In their own early.
Our making A B got a big goal list.
Yes.
Yeah.
We got them early. Um, okay, if there's nothing else, um, all in favor of approving the consent agendas, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think that's all this. Motion carries. And I turned too many pages. I think we're on to action items. We are. Okay. Action item. Our first one is resolution number five, a stopping budget. Let's see you.
Well, yes, so um the, uh, as you all know, the budget committee um approved the budget. So the next step is it for it to come to the board for ratification. So um, if you see there, there is a recommended motion. For anybody who'd like to start that.
Um. I'm wondering.
I move to approve resolution number five as presented to adopt the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six and the total amount of forty nine million four hundred ninety six thousand two hundred and nineteen and zero zero cents.
Uh, second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the budget uh resolution number five. Then you hold it.
Tony, does Michelle need to read?
I think you need to read the whole resolution. Uh.
Did you read that?
No, the fiscal year.
The attachment.
Twenty twenty five. Oh, wait. Where's that?
Done that.
That's it.
I just brought it up.
Got it. Looking at it. Uh, twenty twenty five, twenty six and the total of forty nine million four hundred ninety six thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars. That's right one.
Yes.
At the rate of four dollars, four point four one oh five per thousand obsessed value for permanent rate tax at the rate of fifty two cents per thousand dollars for local option tax and in the amount of five million seven hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars for the debt service on general allocation bonds. Be it resolved that the taxes imposed are hereby categorized for the purposes of Article eleven, section eleven B as permanent rate tax four point four one oh five for a thousand and local option tax fifty two for a thousand. Excluded from limitation, general obligation, bond debt service, five million seven hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approving resolution number five and adopting the budget, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
There you.
Yay.
And resolution number six, the TANs loans.
So as uh as Tony shared, we are experiencing delays in both federal and state reimbursements for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Um, uh, they are, um, they're being sent to us through reimbursements later than they have in the past. So um, our current cash reserves are in line to pay staff through the month of September. But because we receive property tax payments in November, we are thinking ahead to make sure we have enough cash on hand for October payroll. Um, so this one month in October, TANs loan is what I'll call an insurance policy to be proactive in case we still see delays in reimbursements for our grants. So I bring this to you once again as a proactive way um to be prepared if we continue to experience those delays.
I move to approve resolution number six as presented, authorizing tax and revenue anticipation notes and related.
Second. My motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution number six for a TANs loan.
We did, we do that last year or.
We haven't had to do one since twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty one is the last one before ASR.
And if the money comes in between now and then, we just pay the TANs loans back.
And what? Yes, or don't take them or whatever. And Tony's looking into it. Maybe you can address that. I mean, you know, if if they do come in on time and we don't need it, can we deny that loan?
Um, we can, um, but I would, I would rather fund it early to make sure we have it and and not get caught up in um in that whole process because it does take a while to um fund that TANs loan. So and it's um, the one that I have have seen is um about four percent and we actually get more in um in um interest pay um in receivables in our LGIP. So I don't see a, I don't see a big impact.
It's not like an early payoff, obviously.
No, there's no, there's no penalties. There's no.
Mm hmm.
Nothing. And I know historically, we always used to do the TANs loans because of the taxes and the way that our district is funded. It's just ASR funds has got, they got us into a place where we didn't, which is great. And you know, different budgeting. Um, but this is a pretty common thing because of, we rely so much on property taxes.
Mm hmm.
Well, it might be question that. Even question, I don't know how to say it.
Maybe um.
If so, we don't touch our reserves, we get a loan instead of pulling from our.
That was my same question. Why would we not just get into our reserves since we have a good reserved cushion? Can you talk about a little bit of the difference between uh cash flow and?
Uh, so budget is is like a snapshot of what we're doing all through the year. But our cash flow, um, we have our around eight million dollars at the end of the year, but we need at least ten to eleven million dollars to get us through November. And so, so there's a little bit of a a shortfall there if we don't get um all of our grants in in the meantime.
Okay.
Mainly just because there's a delay and.
In, in, in being, right, right. So um, I don't, just to um, just to give a little snapshot of that. We, you know, we get our grant allocations and then um uh Tony uh files in EGUMS. Um, you know, for um our uh reimbursements, um after we send in our reports that we've used the grant money accordingly. And um, and then we wait for the state or the federal government to reimburse us. So um uh, sometimes they come in really quickly and like I said, we're, they're just coming in slower than.
Yeah.
Uh, than it has been in the past.
And what are, what are the taxes or interest on the loan that TANs?
So um, the one that I saw um come in um earlier was um at four percent per annum. Um, and and it's um figured out thirty days. Um, so so it's not, not a huge amount, um, but it is still, still interest.
You're thinking we'll get this by October, people, or November, exactly, for sure.
We, well, if if we don't get our um receivables in, then we'll need it in October.
And what, and this process takes about, what, thirty, forty five days?
At least, yeah. It, it depends on which um, which TAN loans uh we use, whether we go direct or a public set.
And that's why we started the process early. And just to let you know, the majority of districts need to get TANs loans every year. Um, so we need to approve this now in this budget meeting so we have time to.
Okay, better to have it and not need it than for need it and not have it.
Right, exactly.
Essentially, yeah.
Okay.
And just another question, you were going down the rabbit hole.
Sure.
Um, when we, we did, when we determined that we don't need it, what does that process look like?
We just paid back.
So you don't need any like, more to the rejected or anything?
No, no.
Good.
Anyone, anything else? We good? We feel good about this? Okay, all in favor of resolution number six, twenty twenty five TANs loan? Say aye.
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 Motion carries. The designations twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
So each year, um, um, we uh provide our designations and this is obviously for the um twenty twenty five, twenty six year. Um, this includes um um stating that I as your superintendent or that is, is, is the chief administrative officer. Um, with Tony being business manager and deputy clerk. It um, it just spells out um the custodian of funds and um establishing uh our borrowing limit as well as um identifying me as the superintendent as the budget officer and um systems for awards as well. And um, and then of course, we need to approve the regular monthly board meeting um schedule. Um, and because we have a meeting in uh July this year, when we normally don't, uh, but it's a, it's an election year. So we needed to include that. So please note that. Um, we also have the um, the depositories uh for school funds with the banks listed there. Um, we have a list of our confidential employees. Uh, we use both the Astorian and the Oregonian for um as our official newspaper. The reason we add the Oregonian is because the Astorian doesn't um print every day. Um, you'll also see that our official auditors continue to be Polly Rogers. And um, and the payment uh on contracts, you can see there. I am the hearings officer as um historically in our school district, um, it has been the superintendent who's a hearings officer. Um, Tony talked a little bit about our food service program. And so there are details listed there as well as our breakfast and lunch prices.
Still good there for lunch, I say.
Yes, it is. Um, so please, uh, please take a look, um, as the last uh page, the third page there on um our school board meeting schedule uh continues to be uh the third Tuesday except for the month of December, which is the second Thursday.
I move to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty six designations.
Nice, I got it. A motion has been made to move the, to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty six designations. Uh, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have disposal of district property in the technology world.
Yes, so um per our board policy, um disposal of district property um needs to be approved by the board. The attachment is um a document from our technology supervisor, um Jack Walker, which outlines that the technology department is requesting that um that the following items are obsolete and do not have value. And it lists their um, the Chromebooks, uh desktops, monitors and printers. And um, these are disposed of um uh during um uh technology recycling events.
I move to approve the disposal of the obsolete or irreparable technology equipment as requested.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the disposal of the obsolete or irreparable technology equipment as requested. Any questions, comments? But is it irreparable?
Irreparable. I can read.
Uh, no, if there are none, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, evaluation summary. Um, last meeting, I think, did you guys have executive session and read the evaluation letter? So I am going to, oh, thank you, Leslie, for printing it off.
No.
Um, I would say. I would say over the years of doing the evaluation, it's getting more streamlined it more and it's um. Then it's been a process like all things here. Um but the summary twenty twenty five presented to superintendent Susan Penrod on May twentieth, twenty twenty five states. The board of directors of the Seaside School District has completed the annual evaluation of superintendent Susan Penrod for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. Six out of seven board members have served on the board for at least one year and have been able to observe and be a part of the success achieved this year. The evaluation focused on eight professional standards and the superintendent's goals. Regarding the eight professional standards, the board determined that superintendent Penrod's performance. Was exemplary in the areas of culturally responsive instructional leadership and improvement, policy governance and advocacy. And ethics and professional norms in the areas of visionary district leadership, inclusive district culture and communications and community relations. The board felt performance was highly effective. Effective financial management and effective organizational management all received a rating of above average. The board determined that superintendent Penrod had done an outstanding job of moving forward with goals she set. In June of last year, the capital improvement goal, including design and construction of a new softball field, was rated perfect. Developing a district-wide instructional framework was rated highly effective. The research and development of a seaside school district foundation is in process and received a rating of above average. The board and superintendent chose to distribute a targeted feedback survey. To selected members of staff and community for feedback on the superintendent's performance. The result of this survey. Were one source of data and the consideration of performance of a superintendent. The results of the feedback reflected that the superintendent is student-focused. Has a strong board superintendent relationship, collaborates with community organizations and gives teachers professional freedoms. Areas identified for improvement are in communication of the district strategic plan. The board will be working with superintendent Pedron over the next several weeks to develop goals for the superintendent, which are aligned with our district goals and look forward to working together. To continue the success of our district. Respectfully, seaside school board. The district board of directors, Brian Taylor, Chris Quarter, Catherine Davidson, Sandra Gomez, Michelle Hawkins, Kevin Lacoste and Shannon Sweenborg.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you. I know this is a, this is a very detailed process. I um. It it should be, so I really appreciate that and um thank you for your your collaboration.
I mean, I will say from when we first did it, I mean, even when we started it, when with Sheila to now, the. It has gotten a lot more streamlined and I think you've helped that in implementing the the like quarterly check-ins or any of that's been huge and kinda. Checking in where you are and your goals and seeing that because you know, we do something in June and then we have to then in. April, do this whole. What, eight page thing? And so it's nice to check in along the way and know what is happening, so I think that was a a great addition.
There's a lot of value to the district of doing the process and it's growing and I mean, I've been kind of a part of obviously watching it change every year and. Starting pretty uh raw to begin with. But that's awesome to see the growth mindset that we have as a district and the board just trying to help our superintendent be the best she can be for. For our district and appreciate all that you do to care about these kids and hang with us.
Yes, and Leslie, thank you for helping us along the way with that too. Um and this is an action item, so.
I'm going to adopt, I move to adopt the superintendent evaluation summary for the twenty twenty four, twenty five, twenty. Oh my goodness, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
Uh motion has been made and seconded to adopt the superintendent that. Superintendent evaluation summary for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. I think this might be where we would have made comments, so any comments?
I I just wanna say thank you, Susan, for your leadership and your love and your passion for students and. Um staff and and all of us and our collaboration, but I appreciate you and all that you do, so thank you.
Did we approve it? Uh all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Like if I was playing eight people's golf right now, was this about where I started? Oh, board reflections and announcements, that's where we are now.
Who would like to be the greeter next month?
Not it. I would like to reflect just that I am, it's been, I mean, I started out in a old building down. The road there. Um and we now get this beautiful view and I've gotten to see the whole arc and. You know, it's it's bittersweet, you know, and. Not gonna talk very much, but it's been a a awesome, awful. Emotional, exciting, uh every emotion that you could say this ride is it and it's. I mean, I think the icing on the cake just happened last Monday, so I'm totally okay being done with the ending on a high note there and. You know, seeing people, is it Chantrelle? Seeing kids like Chantrelle just knock it out of the park and getting to see these things, like I'll miss. Sitting in a board meeting and and listening to something like that, you know, it's like, there's a lot of other places I can go see it, but we really get, it's like standing at this, we get. People that come in front of us and we get to see awesome and amazing things happening, so it's been really a lot of fun and. Uh there's been a lot of strange things like this weird thing called COVID. But um I mean, it doesn't get much better than this, looking at strong women. Creating our future, looking out at the ocean, so I appreciate you guys and I will miss it, but I'm not going anywhere, this is not here. Maybe maybe when I'm bored and all my kids are gone, I'm gonna be a greeter.
Shell will be online.
I'm gonna sit with Nisa and watch.
I'll just say to you, just the bittersweet thing kinda hits pretty good, you know, just trying to balance all the things, but I'm excited, yeah, for sure. I mean, you got my heartstrings when you said all those things and the way you presented stuff, just in thinking about when you were just young and. And uh on a little softball team, I was coaching or whatever, so it all, sometimes I think just perspective and reflecting um things is really, really important and. It's just nice to see our district um heading in such a good direction and it has been for a while, it's never easy, but. It's all about the people, honestly, like it, uh none of it can happen without good people involved, so I feel really good about some of the new incoming board members and. Um you know, I'm excited to to see how that goes and I'm excited also just to. Be one step behind Michelle, I'll be I'll be in the audience next year. Now, there's lots of good stuff, I'm excited for Kat and getting on board, she's gotta hold down the fort on the facilities and. Stuff on the committee for me, so that'll be nice, but also just the things that we're doing with the foundation, Susan's goals. You know, our vision, I think, is really important. I think it's neat that um people recognize that we have some work to do with our. Our uh you know, strategic plan and things like that, which we've known uh about, and so we're we're on top of those types of things, so I'm excited to see that happen. I'll definitely miss this little moment, sometimes things are just meant to be, and that's where I'm gonna leave it.
So it's been an interesting ride so far, um even with the graduation, you know, you have those, it teared me up because the pictures that you showed. With them at a younger age, the kids at a younger age or my kids' age right now, and then seeing them as uh an adults essentially, it's like, wow. Goes by fast, so it's like, it's great to be part of this process and to see this district um really go far. So our our two new board members will um will be joining us at the July meeting, they'll be sworn in and hit the ground running.
Can I talk about business too? Is that part of this during this time? I have an idea.
Sure.
And this is reflection. I was thinking about the strategic plan um and how we can um, I guess. Uh share more broadly, uh I was thinking maybe like a like a newsletter of some sort, you know, like how the principals do their newsletters, that might be an area where. We can add a superintendent and that's.
We actually, um we actually talked about that, e- e- every week we have a meeting in the in the district office and we we actually talked about that last week.
Maybe announcement for. There was an email that came through asking for um people to.
On the equity committee? Yeah, I do, you know, the majority of my messaging through Parent Square, but um um I agree that a newsletter would be a great, a great addition.
It could even come from a board member, you know, it doesn't.
Yeah, we could, we can have all kinds of collaborators on that.
Do we have a motion?
Chris, Michelle and Brian, um I feel like not only just this, it's been wonderful working with you guys on the board. Um and getting to know each other, I feel like I have lifelong friends like from this process and I have really appreciated. Um your support in all the different capacities, I mean, whether it's here or outside of work, you know, um I'm, I just really appreciate it and I'll stop talking right now because that. It's not gonna work, so okay, thank you guys, you guys are awesome and I'm gonna miss you and I'm really sad.
I have a big shout out to the staff, teachers, administrators, everybody for a great school year.
You did it.
They enjoy having a great summer, a little time off, enjoy the sun before the grind starts again.
Like on what, cycle number? Three, after the rough road?
Yeah, this was the first class to go all the way through.
Yes, first class to be a person.
To, yeah, be full-time and impress me.
I think the sophomores are the first class from six through twelve, although six was a little COVID, so.
Awesome, well, great job.
What? Oh, greeter, who wants to be greeter? I think you should sign up in my favorite, Jason or Chuck, be like, you're early before you get escorted.
We'll give him a month.
And if there's nothing else to bring before the board, thank you all for being here, meeting is adjourned. And it's June.